Good evening, everyone. It's 6:30, so I'm going to call the school committee business meeting to order for Monday, May 20th at the Senior Community Center. Ms. Yell, can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Charme Rieden.
We'll be late.
Sarah Hall.
Here.
Brian Callahan is absent. Andy Boger.
Here.
Brianna Higgins.
Here.
Kathleen Shaw.
Here.
Julia Walker.
Present.
All right. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public whose allegiance stands in the name of our nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I didn't see anyone signed up for public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to comment this evening? Okay, then we'll move right on to staff recognitions.
Thank you. Okay, as we do in every school committee meeting, we have an opportunity to recognize amazing staff and some amazing students. So tonight we'll be recognizing some staff recognition and just really a whole group of educators that have just really impacted our entire community with the performing arts. And I'm gonna read you with what we wrote up a little bit here today, but I just, from as superintendent, the work that you've done this year has just been truly amazing. So tonight, we're honoring our district's performing arts, theater, and music teachers for their unwavering dedication to our students through remarkable productions such as Legally Blonde, Matilda, Suzie Co., The Musical, as the Waterfront Festival, and various fall and spring concerts. These teachers have showcased their incredible talent and commitment to the Newburyport Public Schools. Their tireless efforts and expertise brings the best out of our community, enriching the lives of all who have experienced their performances. We extend our deepest gratitude for the countless hours they invest shaping memorable experiences and fostering creativity in our schools. We all want to thank them for the positive impact that they make day in and day out. So they deserve a round of applause. And we'll call up by school and name. So the first is our high school, so Lisa Zaleski. Come on up. It's like the Price is Right. Stay up here, and Ms. Hall, why don't you come on up with us tonight? Stephanie Phillips. Steve Cohen. Yeah, we'll do it for the photo op. That'd be great. And then we also want to recognize a student teacher from Emerson College who's had a great impact on the high school, Shannon Booth. At the NOC Mullen, we're recognizing Brian Nickerson, who cannot be here tonight. He's performing. Kathleen Shepherd, she is here. Risa Inacaricchio. Not bad. Not bad. Two thumbs up. And then the Bresnahan, Gardner Rulon Miller. Come on up. We'll take a quick photo op, and then Risa would like to say a few words.
Yeah, I was just gonna try to pass these out.
Pass them all.
Here, take a few.
Thank you. There you go.
But I work so hard.
You're gonna have to give these back so that the mayor can sign them.
Ms. Hall, why don't you jump right in?
Yes, yes.
Are we starting by now here? Is that good?
Yeah, it's wonderful. Appreciate it. Very. And then you want to say a few words, right? All right.
All right. I am gonna collect these for the signature.
We're collecting them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You'll get it after the major signature comes on. Come on. Okay, yeah. We're gonna get a major signature on this before you.
We should go say a few words, then we're gonna introduce Mr. McSweeney as our new facilities director, and then we'll take a short recess, so everyone just hang tight. There you go.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, everybody. Don't mind me, I have a touch of laryngitis, post-concert laryngitis, always happens. My name is Risa Anacarico. I am the music teacher at Mullen. I had a couple of words that I prepared to say during the Waterfront Festival, but it was running long, so I didn't want to keep anyone. It was very cold, and it was very rainy. So I know these don't typically call for an acceptance speech, and I originally planned to make this address during the Waterfront Concert, but it was really cold, as I mentioned, and we were running behind, and I feel that this is an even better time. We are so lucky to live in such an arts and education-positive community, and I feel that I have a unique perspective that makes this honor especially big for me. As a fourth grader at the old Bresnahan, right here in 1999, who was counting down the days until she could play saxophone like her Uncle Danny, I was heartbroken when the fourth grade band program was cut. I idolized the students who played in the band. I didn't even believe that 10-year-olds could actually play the instruments that I'd seen in orchestras, and I thought it was all an elaborate ruse, and it had to be fake, and there were really speakers behind them. I didn't even think it was possible. Starting band in fifth grade with Mr. Stolar set me on a track as a lifelong musician that I have never questioned. Chorus and drama productions with Mrs. Zaleski, or Zee, as we call her, and Mrs. Phillips opened up a world of opportunities for me. Working with the NHS Band with Steve Cohen and Brian Nickerson during the early years of my career taught me much more than I taught the kids. I love seeing Gardner, a college classmate from UNH, shine in his job at the Bresnahan. He was born for that job. I am so lucky to inherit his students at the Mullen with an inextinguishable love and passion for music and such a strong musical foundation. Kathy Shepherd took me under her wing as I adjusted to my new position and was there for me every step of the way, happily filling the role that we all need of work mom. I am honored and humbled to call these great people colleagues, and I hope you all realize how lucky you are to have them in this district. Sometimes in life, timing works out perfectly. I interviewed for a job here four days after I gave birth to my daughter. I really wanted the job. I started work when she was three weeks old, giving up the time with her to spend infinitely more time with her in the future by working in the community where we live. I don't regret a thing. While raising two young children, I have been able to achieve a work-life balance I never knew possible even before having children. My administration is understanding and supportive, and I never feel that I have to choose between work and family. I have truly found my home. Going back to what the Performing Arts Team has accomplished, I am so proud that for the first time since 1999, band will begin in fourth grade next year. I am so excited for the opportunities that these students will have with this amazing group of educators. After a wonderful childhood here, I get to begin my time as a parent and faculty member in the community I love to call home. I am so proud to be a member of the Newburyport Public Schools staff, and I'm so honored to work with these great children. In time, I know that they will view Newburyport in the same way that my peers do, a perfect place to start their story. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very, very much. Next agenda is I have the opportunity to introduce our new facilities director for the Newburyport Public Schools, Mr. James McSweeney. And just a little background on Mr. McSweeney, he's currently the deputy director of facilities in Andover and has previous experience as a facilities manager for the Woburn Public Schools. His expertise is in management, maintenance of school, municipal facilities, will be a great asset for the Newburyport Public Schools. He also brings with him a bachelor's degree from Merrimack College in Leadership and Business, and also a master's in maritime for facilities, plant engineering. Very important to us. He's also certified in playground safety inspector. That's very important for elementary. And then also Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Officer. In addition to his experience, he also has capital improvement planning, budget management, team facilitation, and wants sure that Newburyport Public Schools continue to be safe, healthy places for learning. To provide a smooth transition, Mr. McSweeney will be working closely with our retiring facilities director, Mrs. Steve Burgholm. Please join me in welcoming James to our school community. Come on up. We gave you a half hour speech, so here you go.
I just want to say thank you. I'm very excited about the opportunity to come work for the Newburyport School System. I'm gonna be actually coming by tomorrow, and be working with Steve for a few hours tomorrow during the day, and then be jumping right in next Tuesday. Being here tonight and seeing the awards going out to the Fine Arts Department is near and dear to my heart. I was a band kid from fourth grade all the way up through college. My daughter is, a 16-year-old daughter, she actually plays the flute in Methuen where I live. She's in the high school band there. I volunteer a ton of time with them, driving the truck to competitions and parades, and you name it, we're there. So, you know, hats off to the Fine Arts Department. Be looking forward to working with you. Anything you guys need, please reach out. Be more than happy to help out. So again, thank you much for the opportunity.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll now take a brief recess.
Brief recess. All right. Good work, everyone.
We wish them safe travels to and from. In NHS News, the Sailbot competition will take place June 2nd to the 7th at Camp Bowercrest in Amesbury. More information is available on the website, www.sailbot.org. Last week Nora Geerling, Sam Harford, Declan Hawkeizer, Ria Corr, Rourke Lee, Sasha Layden, and Michelle Saznik, along with Dr. Abrams participated in a panel for our Newburyport families. Originating from a review of school climate data, they partnered with Newburyport Youth Services to help all of us better understand the pressures of being a student. The Investment Club conducted their final presentation of the year to their advisory board. Their investment portfolio has done well and they are making plans to monitor it across the summer. Thanks so much to the NEF and volunteer advisors for making this opportunity a reality. The depth of knowledge around fund analysis our students have gained is an invaluable skill. As for athletics, every team is currently ranked high enough to make it to the state tournaments. Thank you.
Thank you, Lizzie. Okay, we're going to move on to the NHS Principals' Office naming inscription. You have some details for us about that?
Yes, and I think it was provided in your packet. Just some background on Ms. Mary Larnard. So as we said before in a previous school committee, she was a pioneer in Newburyport and I think in the business community. She was the first female high school principal at Newburyport High School. She was actually a graduate of Amesbury High School and earned her bachelor's degree in math from Salem State College. Mary then spent her entire 36-year career at Newburyport High School. She was the first math teacher, becoming Chair of the Math Department as a female. She was, as we said, Mary's the first female principal in NHS. She was also the first female trustee in the Institution of Savings and also the first female president of the Newburyport Rotary Club. Tyler Civic Leader was presented with the key to the city of Newburyport in 1993. And then her entire background is also provided for a school committee. As an aspect of the vote and the inscription is down on the bottom. So the Institution of Savings is sponsoring the naming of the Principals' Office. And as you can see, in memory of Mary E. Larnard, first female principal, 1988-2001, mathematics and computer science chair, 1977 to 1988, and mathematics teacher, 1965 to 1988, known for her commitment to her students whom always referred to her, as she always referred to as my kids.
Okay. She seems like a terrific choice. So our approval of the name, Mary Larnard, comes from Policy FF, which is currently under review, but my understanding is that the current policy still dictates that we take this vote to accept or approve. What's the correct?
Consistent with the policy, we have the authoritative name for portions of our schools. And so we should be the ultimate body approving the naming. We can designate, and our current policy allows the Newburyport Education Foundation to act, to negotiate with members of the community to receive donations to the NEF in exchange for consideration of naming of rooms and facilities. But we ultimately have the authority to approve the name. And just to sort of elaborate on our policy, the naming should be considered consistent with our overall school policies. We shouldn't be showing favoritism to some member or person in the community without consideration of what the reasons are that we would want to honor that person. And I personally think that this is consistent with our overall mission and goals of the school district, so I would support it.
Thank you. Would you be prepared to make a motion?
Sure. Yeah. So I would make a motion consistent with our authority under Policy FF to approve the naming of the Principals' Office as presented tonight.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd just further add that we certainly appreciate the role that NEF has for raising money on behalf of our school system. And just understanding that these are two different sort of roles. One is fundraising and the NEF does that separate from the school district and the school committee. But the designation of school facilities is specifically something we have to ultimately approve, although we appreciate all the efforts of the NEF.
I can absolutely second that. We are so fortunate to have the NEF in our community. And it seems like Mary Larnard is a fantastic choice. I enjoyed reading her bio. Anyone else?
Just for historical context, are there circumstances, Superintendent, when areas or rooms are named without involvement of the NEF?
I think as part of the policy, at this time, in my experience in the last six years, the NEF has been a big part of that. But the school committee also has authority to name different areas.
Well, I would say we have recent examples of facilities being named without the involvement of the NEF. The track, the rebuilding of the track and all that was done through a friend with a friend group, but that naming happened without the direct involvement of the NEF. There are situations, I think, when we built the new Bres and, you know, naming different portions of that and so forth. So yes, there definitely have been situations where the NEF is not involved. And there's no necessarily like a tit for tat, like it has to always be for a donation. There could be other circumstances where we name a facility.
That's helpful. Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I realized I skipped right over Whittier Rep Report because I didn't see it on here. Come on up. We thank you both for coming. And again, apologies for the confusion about tonight. Look forward to hearing from you.
Yes. Good evening. No problem. Stuff like that happens all the time. So I just want to start off by saying I had an amazing opportunity last week to attend the Whittier Tech Advisory Board meeting. It was actually, we were honored with the guest speaker, Elizabeth Bennett, who is the Associate Commissioner from DESI for College and Career Technical Programs. Very well-attended event, over, I think, well over 100 folks that were there. And it was very interesting for me as a new member to learn more about the programs offered at Whittier Tech. One of those programs includes the summer program. This summer we'll be having free career training programs, supported by the state, for unemployed and underemployed individuals. Whittier will be running nine programs and there is still room in manufacturing, marine technology, culinary arts, and construction craft laborers. If there's anyone interested, please contact their career technical education office at Whittier. Pleased to announce also there are 310 graduating seniors from the class of 2024. We have 108 seniors who are participating in the early college partnership with Northern Essex Community College. We have 18 Whittier Tech students who've been recognized by the Massachusetts State Seal of Biliteracy with the Biliteracy Award. The Massachusetts State Seal of Biliteracy recognizes students who have achieved proficiency in English and a partner language by high school graduation. And the senior prom will be held at the Blue Ocean in Salisbury on May 28th.
Good evening, school committee members. We have graduation on May 30th at 7:00 PM. Senator Pavel Peano will be our guest speaker. We are also in the process of working with Northern Essex Community College on a possible building project, as you know. We'll be looking to study and determine the feasibility of the partnership and determine the opportunities and obstacles that we may face as we move forward over the next few months. As you know, that's a slow process. And I have a list of 16 seniors from Newburyport on their current shop employment and post-high school plans. We have one gentleman, he's in the electrical, he works for Smith Electrical, and he plans on going on to a technical trade school in Laconia. We have a young lady that's in dental assisting. She works at Amesbury Dental Associates right now, and she intends on going to Northern Essex Community College in the pre-dental program. And she is an early college student. We have an HVAC student that works for Scaf Refrigeration, and he plans on going on to continuing his employment there. We have a girl in marketing, she works for North of Boston. She plans on continuing to work there and going to Northern Essex Community College. She was a silver medalist in the careers pathways for business marketing. We have another gentleman that's in the DVC, and he plans to go to Northern Essex Community College. We have another young lady in engineering, she works at Rochester Electronics here in Newburyport, and she plans on going to Rochester Institute of Technology. She is an early college student, and she was also a bronze medalist in principles of technology. We have one Newburyport High School student that's in our CVTE program, and he plans on going, moving forward into the CTI program this summer in the craft, the labor's, construction labor's craft. That's it for now.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Whittier reps this evening? Thank you for coming. Thank you so much. Okay, next is the handbooks. Do you want to call the principals?
Yeah, sure. Mr. Marcos, I think you're up first. Let me just switch this over.
Scroll up. There we go. All right, we can just utilize a little iPad here and just scroll. So as part of the packet in the front, I kind of just provided school committee with the process of student handbooks and the revisions, and then talking about the work that our school councils do and the principals working with their school councils every year. And then just really kind of giving the overview of school committee is, as we go through this process, just really ensuring we're in compliance with mass general laws regarding to students and discipline, et cetera. Both our attorneys look at the student handbooks and make sure, MGL, is all approved. And if there's ever changes in mass general laws, then we'll incorporate that. We just recently found out, and we'll probably have to do some revisions of Title IX under the new administration. There's been some changes to Title IX from the previous administration. I'm talking the federal government. So we'll have to reflect those once we have those changes. But at this point, I'm going to call Mr. Marcos and then afterwards Mr. Wolf to kind of go over some of the work that their student councils and school councils have done, and just really proud of that process. So here you go, Mr. Marcos.
Awesome. I can just use that?
Yeah, just, there you go.
Wow. Very high-tech, Mr. Gallagher. Thanks. All right. So thanks for having me tonight. Just as Mr. Gallagher said, two of the major things that we do with our school council is just budget and looking at a lot of policies and procedures, you know, through our handbook, and also really getting the students involved in this process. So one of our things we really want to take a look at for next year with our student council is really just looking, diving deeper more. We have a behavioral flow chart, looking at some of the consequences that we kind of give out when students are not meeting expectations, really getting some student voice. Continue also to really adopt our practice with a more restorative approach than punitive. And there's very little of that in today's presentation, but most of it is just really minor procedural things. A lot of the things that we are updating is just, it was just outdated. It's just things that we don't do anymore. So really the first one, how we cancel school, we don't do some of this anymore, so we just updated how we do it, right? We send emails, Mr. Gallagher calls, we have an app, we communicate. Okay? There was never anything about a late bus, so oftentimes we got feedback from families, "Well, how does my kid stay after school?" "Well, we have a late bus." So again, just wanted to add that language in the handbook, so parents are aware that kid can stay after school any day of the week, we get a late bus to take care of you. Again, just adapting our arrival procedures, you know, it was just a few years ago where the knock and maul were not at the same time, so our times were a little bit differently. So our arrival times have bumped, you know, just a handful of minutes here. Adding an email to where, how we do attendance, so there used to be like an attendance hotline. We don't have an attendance hotline anymore. They can either call the main office, leave a message, and then we have, you know, knock attendance, knock attendance at such and such, where families can just email our main office staff to report attendance and the reason why their child is absent. So again, with the addition of the email and just our procedures, we essentially just deleted the student absence notification program, it was outdated, we don't do it anymore. I guess the only really big deletion from our handbook is really the office detention procedure. Kind of outdated, archaic, you know, Ms. Jones gives, you know, Sean Gallagher a detention, you know, because he was misbehaving in math class. Sean goes down to the office, serves his detention with the principal who was like, "Hey, why are you here?" "Well, I got a detention from Ms. Jones, second period, because I threw a pencil across the room." So we took that language out because we don't do it that way anymore. Do we still have kids stay after school? Yes, we do. Do we call it detention? Not really. Sometimes it's a five-minute conversation. Parents are, you know, in the loop 99% of the time. Again, taking a more restorative approach than anything. When we have to keep students after school for not meeting expectations, we just call home, but it's very, it's a very rare way of how we handle things. So we just felt it was in the best interest of, you know, we felt it was misinformation at this point in our handbook to have it in there. And then just looking at, under cafeteria procedures, if you look at the last line under where it says current possible consequences, so this is essentially students throwing food in the cafeteria. The last thing, it says a suspension. I don't think we'd ever suspend a kid for throwing a chicken nugget. At least, I don't know. It would have to be a really hard throw. So we just felt, let's take that language out. And as we kind of dove deeper into some of the language and the consequences, we felt that was some work that we would probably take a look at next year, a little bit deeper in changing some of the ways we handle things. And obviously we're doing, you know, much more restorative work like we talked about. So those are, again, just some minor changes in language and procedures that we have made with the help of our school council.
That's great. Thank you for doing this work.
Of course.
I love the attendance email. That would have been very handy. It's too late for me now, but...
Too late. You could always come back.
Yeah, I love that. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, just on that one, with the Blackboard Connect, is there ever a time when we're not going to be using Blackboard Connect? Could we be more general so you don't have to update it if we ever change our system? Is Blackboard Connect the only way we're ever going to communicate via the phone? I was just thinking...
Yeah, so right now that is our system. We could put language in like our automated system. We'll always have some sort of automated system.
That's a good suggestion. And I assume the email there is just misspelled on this slide and not in the handbook. Newburyport is spelled wrong.
Yep.
Good catch.
No, it's not. We haven't updated our handbook, so it's good. You got it, Ty. Whoever made this slide, I will tell them in the morning.
One other...
Obviously, I'm going to get detention if it was the old handbook.
Sorry. One other just comment, which is that, you know, we, this is great. I really appreciate the, you know, update. You know, we're in the process of finalizing our last revisions to our audit, and there were a number, we went through the section on student policies, so Section J. I think when you guys are starting to review again next year, your handbook, just make sure there's some quick review of the current policies, particularly related to discipline, to make sure there's consistency. Because I think what you've changed, I think, is consistent with what we changed as well, but just making sure there's symmetry between the two.
Awesome. All right, great.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
All right, this time we'll call Mr. Wolf and his team, or just Mr. Wolf. I also, as part of our process, is our Mullen and President Administration, they're working, they set up working groups for the elementary handbooks, or a little bit, I would say they're not as detailed as a high school. So that's going to be some of their summer work. So they'll be, you know, also next year being approved during the early fall. So, Mr. Wolf, come on up.
Yeah, scroll over. Yeah, see that? I like it.
Got an iPad there?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. All right, well, thanks for having me. And so before launching into the updates that we're proposing for the handbook, just to talk a little bit, first I want to recognize both Jim Antonelli and Mike Testa. So they were a big part of the work that we had been doing with the school council, really over the past three to four months, as we were developing and making proposals and going back and forth with the council in terms of what were going to be the updates to the handbook. And just in regards to process, so at the high school, we have our student council, we have our faculty council, and it's really through their meetings where, and my being in attendance or meeting with the officers of the student council or the teachers who manage the faculty council, that allows me to gauge an idea of, you know, which policies or practices or procedures that we do want to approach at the school council level. Also, prior to beginning the handbook review, where I have my messages that go home typically bi-weekly, and so once we kind of get into the handbook review season, that information is going out to all of the families. And families also have the opportunity to fill out a form and make recommendations for areas that they want the council to have a conversation around. And sometimes that has led to changes, sometimes we've just decided that that was not something we would be focusing in on. And so what you'll see here, so with all of that kind of in play, and then while we're having the conversations each month at the council, I'm producing my meeting summaries that also go out to all the families, so everybody can really be up to date with the discussion, conversation that's happening at the council. And with some of these items this time around, it was great, you know, because I'm publicizing who the members of the council are, and parents can reach out to the parent representatives, students are able to reach out to the student representatives, and they were all coming to the meetings with lots of information. And that's really kind of what guided where we landed on a lot of the, on all of these, really. And so you'll see with the proposed recommendations here, they really kind of fall into three categories. So attendance being one of them. We have three policies that focus on attendance, where we've really been trying to do a lot of work, especially at trying to reduce our chronic absentee rate. And so that really did become a priority for us. Also, just in regards to being more specific, but also being more clear on how we manage expectations of our students at extracurricular events, and then having parameters around how we wait and have students register for dual enrollment classes. That was also another big conversation that the council took on. So our first one is the class attendance policy, and Mr. Testa and Mr. Antonelli will also chime in if there are any questions that I'm not able to answer. But initial, so our current policy allows students to have nine unexcused absences from a course before they lose credit for that class. And the initial thinking around that, that that would be in line, our courses are semester-based, so that allows for 18 unexcused absences across the school year. So our recommendation was to reduce that to seven, so just that it helps to engage in conversation sooner. We're still following our practices about sending the letters home for students that have excessive absences, but this also kind of, the idea thinking here, was to engage teachers and students in the conversations around attendance as well. Now granted, students, if the absences are excused, then that kind of negates the situation with the policy. And all of these that I'm going to be presenting tonight, as we went through the process at the council, the council was in full favor for the recommendations. And so that's the first one. The next one was making sure that our policy for participation in co-curricular activities, our extracurriculars, was a little bit more clear, because the initial, the original policy had it at, you needed to be in school for a minimum of three and a quarter hours. And so here it was a matter of trying to make it a lot more specific for students, and so making it aligned to our periods that we have. And so you'll see here, to arrive to school on time and attend school for a minimum of three classes. So if they're coming late, as long as they're in school for the three classes, whether it's kind of the latter part of the day or the initial part of the day, then they'd be able to participate in their athletics, as long as they're not being dismissed due to an illness. And so that was the significant change that we had there. And then our next one was, really here was more of a minor change, but just providing more specifics to our students, where we had done a lot of work with our student leaders and also with our fans at all of the events in terms of, you know, how we want our students to be representing Newburyport. And so we added all of this information into the behaviors for spectators at events, and that's what you see highlighted there as the actual additions to the policy. Now with the, primarily, this, a lot of this stemming, this impacts our extracurricular activities, but a big part was also with the athletics handbook. And what we had done here was our policy around student use of substances outside of school or inside of school is that our policy was reading to the point that if a student was just in, was in the presence of alcohol or drugs or any type of illegal chemical, that they could be, they would be suspended from athletic events or extracurricular activities. The MIAA, over the past few years, they had updated their policy, and that's really all we did was really become more in line with the MIAA recommendations. And this is pretty much what we have been following for the past couple of years as well. So the MIAA statewide minimum standard is not intended to render guilt by association. And so really, by being in the presence of does not necessarily mean that you would be suspended from an extracurricular activity. It's really about being in possession, distribution. If that's what gets written up in a report, then that's how we would follow through with any suspension from an extracurricular activity. And so pretty much with that policy was updating it to where the MIAA regulations had gone. All right, so with new policies, so in trying to help out with our emphasis around attendance, we did want to put in information for nurse dismissals, and especially for when a nurse dismissal would be considered an excused absence. Because there are many times that students show up at the nurse's office, and they may not necessarily be sick or whatever else, and so their recommendation is not to send the student home. Get some, "Why don't you stay here for 30 minutes, and then maybe we can send you back to class." However, this does accommodate for the fact that if a student, if a parent still does wind up dismissing their student, it would not necessarily be excused, but the parent still has that right. And based off of going against the nurse's recommendation as to whether or not the student would stay at school or not to finish off the day. The next new policy was to insert more specific around the school's use of breathalyzers. So earlier this year, I had received some feedback just in regards to how we were implementing them. And so then we went through, and so it made sense that this was something that we wanted to bring up at the school council level, and this is pretty much where we landed. So being very specific of how we do breathalies for our school dances, but then we can use a breathalyzer if there is a concern about a student being under the influence at other large-scale events, such as our athletic events. Also, based off of feedback and the recommendations, we wanted to be specific about what happens if a student does test positive for having alcohol when using the breathalyzer. How does the school... when using the breathalyzer. How does the school respond? And this policy, uh, addresses that piece. Uh, and then also how the school would respond if a student refuses to use the breathalyzer. But really, in the end, kind of the idea behind this policy is just ensuring that, you know, we are making sure that regardless of the student behavior, that the student is staying safe. Uh, we're making it clear that we are communicating with the parents ultimately to come in on, in that situation. Okay, and the last is dual enrollment. So, over the, the past six years, uh, that I've been here and Mr. Gallagher, we've had an emphasis on trying to really increase dual enrollment opportunities for, for our students. We started with the Endicott College classes, uh, and then we formed a deeper partnership with Northern Essex Community College. Uh, and then we also have our, I apologize for that, we also have, uh, a partnership now with Southern New Hampshire University as well, where our teachers go through a rigorous process to deliver an SNHU course right in our building. But now with that, we never really updated any of our policy, so it really was more of a free-for-all in terms of kind of the registrations and classes, uh, that students were taking. And really, through the student council and our faculty council, there was a concern about wait, but then also at the same time, you know, do we wanna make sure that students are taking our core curriculum, uh, that measures, that measures skills across the four years, uh, that a student is at Newburyport High School. And so those were the, the areas that the council really took on. And so, the, one of the things that the council really got to, um, for those of you that are high school parents, if you were reading the summaries that went back, uh, to the parents, um, with the conversation that was happening at the council meetings, uh, the council did agree that we do want students taking our core curricular classes, uh, and so that we would not have a dual enrollment course replacing, um, a core curriculum class. We're doing a lot of work around our portrait of a graduate. Students are gonna be assessed on those skills, and that's all within our core curriculum areas. However, there was the concern, uh, that administration brought up, because we do, we are, we have students that are involved in the associates program at Northern Essex Community College. We are also starting to have conversations around the early college designation that we would like to apply for. So there would be certain, we wanna make sure there is a level of flexibility, that if a student were in any of these programs, and if we were to ever get, uh, the early college designation from the state, that that would be, that would kind of, um, that we would be able to make those decisions, that a student would be taking classes instead of our, um, our core curriculum, because we would be helping the student and guiding the student in the classes that they would be taking at Northern Essex Community College, as we would not want to deter students from being enrolled in these programs at the school. Now, the other part of this was the conversation around the weight of the advanced placement courses. Uh, and one of the things that the state actually recommends, it's on their website, that they do encourage schools, and actually at the state university, um, at the state universities, they, they actually consider the weight of any dual enrollment class as an advanced placement course. Now, we're one of the few schools in the, uh, region that does offer advanced placement credit, uh, for dual enrollment, but the, but our thinking was that the state, recognizing that dual enrollment would kind of serve as AP, that we decided really not to address that, that we would keep with what we were still doing in terms of the advanced placement weight for the classes. But however, in that conversation, also what came up, we realized that because of the variety of dual enrollment offerings that we have, we have some dual enrollment offerings that expand the entire school year, and then we have others that are just 10-week classes. And so through that discussion, we all kind of came to this agreement, that if we had a semester-based dual enrollment class, it would still, all the courses are worth the AP level, but that would just, that would be for two and a half credits. And for any full-year dual enrollment course, that would be worth the five credits. And that's where we landed on that policy in practice. I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for doing this work, and thank you for involving the parents. As an NHS parent, I really appreciate the way you keep us up to date and seek input. That's really important. Um, and one question about the, the breathalyzer policy, was there no policy previously?
We had it written in there in different parts, in terms of the breath, using breathalyzers at dances, but then when I had received the feedback back in the fall-
I remember seeing that as well.
-we went into the handbook and really sought it. There really wasn't anything tangible, and some of the parents who were expressing their concerns had a valid point. And so that's why we wanted to make sure there was a specific policy just around that.
So you took all that language and kind of consolidated-
Correct.
...into this one policy. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Wolf? Go ahead, Ms. Higgins.
Also in the breathalyzer policy, Superintendent, you mentioned that the district's attorney had reviewed the handbooks. I just wanted to confirm that, um, disciplinary action for refusing a breathalyzer was acceptable. Like, is that legally okay?
Yeah, it falls under reasonable suspicion. So how I did, the whole idea with, I mean, the whole idea with breathalysing is, as an administrator, if you're at an event and you feel someone's under the influence of alcohol, um, or maybe something else, um, you wanna make sure, um, you know, that they're not. So if they're refusing, you know, that's a reasonable suspicion for an administrator. Um, but at the same time, as Mrs. Wolf said, during this entire process, parents would be called, cause the ultimate goal for all of us is to keep that student safe.
Sure. I mean, I think the reasonable suspicion certainly makes sense to me.
Yeah.
I think the first sentence that said all students would be breathalyzed, so if there was a student that there was no reasonable suspicion, they were under the influence of anything, but they were just refusing, did they still get disciplinary action?
Well, it all depends on, on, um, yeah, I think for those individual cases, when, when administration feels someone's under the influence, the, for dances and proms, uh, part of entry, cause it's an extracurricular, that all students, part of that entry or part of going to those dances and proms, every student needs to be breathalyzed-
Got it.
...to get in.
Got it. Okay.
Right, cause we would not be breathalysing every student at a sporting event, which would just be the reasonable suspicion.
Right. So typically, just in my past experience, like if we had, um, the same thing as Mr. Wolf, like dances, proms, it create a safe environment, um, we would have the students, you know, do the breathalyzer for entry. Um, big sporting events, playoff games, things like that, um, the administration would have those, uh, with them. You're not, you know, breathalysing students that come in, but if you see a student that you feel could be under the influence, it's good to have that, um, you know, that aspect.
Sure. Yeah. I'm not expressing displeasure, I'm just wanting to make sure that, like, legally that was sound.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Walker?
But that question does come up amongst parents, meaning, um, so you've got sort of a, a catch-all for one, meaning the policy is in order to get into this event, you must take a breathalyzer. So there's a lot of clarity there. With the sporting events, are there, it doesn't sound like according to this, are there situations when there might be random screens?
Not random screens. So like, for example, at a sporting event, we've had situations where a student is wobbly or falling down.
Right.
Or it's reported that, uh, a student's breath smells like alcohol. All of those are reasonable suspicion to kind of assess the situation, and then an administrator would make the decision, let's use the breathalyzer.
So only in those situations?
Correct.
Again, I'm not suggesting whether it'd be unreasonable or not to do that. Some people have suggested it might be a good deterrent to-
Oh, correct, yes.
...to randomly say, well, on this given night, a portion of you guys might have a breathalyzer. But that, that sounds like that's not going to be the case.
That's not, you, you would, you know, for administration, they would need to have some sort of reasonable suspicion that something's, something's, you can't, they wouldn't be out randomly just selecting.
Yeah. But students being aware, I think, that breathalyzers can be used. I mean, that was definitely a deterrent earlier this school year, once we made that more explicit for the kids.
No, I remember that. That was excellent. And then just one, um, small clarification on the attendance. It, it sounds like there's been a very positive clarification made, because I know this has come up particularly with athletes, um, but also artists that might have an, an event on the weekend. If you're sick the day before, um, you, that precludes you from a weekend event. There's now language here saying that with authorization, I think was the word. What form might that come in?
Would you guys be able to talk to that one? That's on the attendance?
Yeah.
If a student is sick over the weekend?
Well, it was more if they're like, say they're sick on a Friday, the suggestion was then they could not, they could not attend, or they could not perform, um, on the weekend.
Yeah, a student possibly might, may be out sick on a Friday.
Yeah.
But then let's say there's a, a Saturday evening game-
Exactly.
...where the, the parents feel the, the student's well enough. We want just some flexibility to be able to authorize that. Have a conversation with our athletic director and say, you know, we think that it's, it's reasonable that that student play. They're healthy today, but they were sick on, and they had a stomach, stomach situation on, on Friday, but Saturday, they're able to play. Why, why preclude a student from that when they're feeling better the next day? So it gives us some flexibility.
That's excellent. That's exactly what I was hoping for. There, there's some people have expressed frustration with the former policy in which it was a little restrictive. So, thank you for thinking through that so thoroughly.
Sure.
Ms. Walker?
Um, I just had a general comment about the dress code, and I, I should've brought it up when, um, the previous principal was up, but, um, Brian, uh, Mr. Callahan did bring this up last time, and I just did wanna iterate. Our policy, the school, the school committee policy is a lot more broad, like less restrictive than each of your policies. And I think we changed, we actually changed the policy at the request of the high school to kind, to get rid of hat restrictions. Um, I noticed you don't have that in your handbook anymore, but you do, but, um, Principal Marcus in the NOC school, they do have a restriction on hat wearing. So I would just encourage you guys to maybe look at the dress code again when you're doing your next review. I don't think you need to change it now, but try to again be, be consistent with our more, frankly, more flexible policy, which doesn't, uh, you know, explicitly restrict bid reps and things like that. So, so I would just think, our discussion at the school committee level was that, you know, it just, there's, things are changing, styles are changing, and to be that restrictive in this day and age just didn't seem appropriate. So, um, so I would just encourage you maybe to add that to your list for next, next year.
Definitely.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Great work.
So we do need to, to vote and do an approval on this, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Approve the revision.
Okay. Um, and unless anyone objects, I think we can do the two handbooks together. Is everyone okay with, uh, one motion? It seems like it's getting darker and darker. I like this, that one off. Um, so the, the relevant policy is H, uh, sorry, CHCA, if anyone would like to make the motion to approve the two NOC and NHS handbooks.
Uh, consistent with policy CHCA in our, um, school committee policies, um, I, uh, make a motion to approve the recommended changes to the handbooks for the NOC and high school.
Second.
Discussion? Alright, looks like we're all good. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next we have a school choice update, and, um, you should have, uh, a handout that was at your place when you arrived. Is anyone missing the handout? Okay.
I knew we were gonna do it over the mark.
It is getting dark around here.
Yes, yeah. Stay awake.
We can turn the lights on, right? Nothing's per- we're doing, we're doing this.
Gonna do that? I think, um, they put the shades down because there was some pretty bad glare, but that shouldn't be an issue anymore. Let's see. Might be over here. Alright. Let there be light. Thank you.
It's kinda weird though.
It's necessarily better. So you've got some updated numbers for us here?
Yes. So we have updated numbers, a couple suggestions. Um, you know, school choice is, um, been very popular here in Newburyport. Uh, a lot of families are looking to access, I think, uh, our great school system. Um, so as we go through, uh, some of the recommendations, so it looks like at this point in grade four and five, uh, we have, we open up three seats, we have eight slots, so we'll probably have to do a lottery for those two. We're sending out letters, um, just making sure the people that have signed up, they're still committed, cause if some people already know that they're not gonna be coming, so we're, we're hoping, um, that we won't have to do, um, a lottery. But in those two grades, because it's such a small, um, amount, so right now there's three seats and both grades have eight. Um, speaking with Principal Marcos, so we had 15, we have 20 sixth-grade applications at this time. Um, so speaking with Mr. Marcos, this is a smaller sixth-grade class. He felt he could be comfortable if all 20, uh, students came to sixth grade, um, that he could accept them. Um, but once again, very seldom do we have, you know, all of the people that apply for school choice actually come, but, you know, they get in the deadline. So, um, if that's the case, you know, my recommendation was to stop it at 20, uh, to increase sixth grade to 20, speaking with Principal Marcos and his admin team. Um, we also have had discussions, I know for kindergarten and grade one, um, so speaking with Principal Sokolowski, similar to the Mullen and the NOC, she would be comfortable for grade one of opening up three seats. Um, and then I believe the rest of our school choice numbers are accurate as they are. So the recommendation would be to bump, um, grade six from 15 to 20, so you wouldn't need to do a lottery there. We're gonna probably have to do a lottery for the grades four and five, um, and then open up grade one, um, for three slots, similar to grades four, five. And then as always, we monitor kindergarten, but we've never opened up school choice for kindergarten. So, and that's my school choice update. So if we are gonna open up grade one, if that's accepted by school committee, I would need a motion and a vote. And then, um, a motion and a vote to increase the grade six 15 to 20.
Um, can we just do that in one motion, or?
Sure.
Well, I-
To have a discussion.
I'll make a, I'll make a, a motion.
Can we, can we separate him?
Sure.
I'm on the fence.
Oh, that's fine. Then let's do that. Sure. Um, so let's start with the grade six. Um, I can make a motion to, um, increase the grade six school choice slots by five. Just in a second.
To a total of how many?
Um, to a total of 20. Okay, thanks. And second from the mayor, discussion.
So we're not, so if someone applies for grade six tomorrow-
Right. Waitlist.
Right. We are done taking applications.
Yes.
Okay.
That would save us from doing a lottery.
For that grade.
It's, it's also possible that some of them won't come, but-
Correct.
...then they wouldn't have to go through a lottery.
But is, isn't 20 seats nearly a full class?
Um, but their sixth grade is they have teams, so it's not, it's not like a elementary, uh, like fifth grade. So because we have the team rotation in sixth grade, there's slots to accommodate those students.
With team teaching, you can't, you can't reduce the number of teachers without like cutting a subject off the team. Okay.
Are there any concerns that might come along with a bulge, for lack of a better word, in, in a, in a specific class like this, either in this year or following subsequent years?
Concerns with, uh, yeah, though.
Concerns with having a, an increased class size that you might not otherwise have.
Um, not for this class. This is a smaller class compared to, uh, grade seven and eight right now. I mean, right now, we have, we open up 15 slots, um, and we have 20 students that have applied. They all may not come. Um, but if I asked Mr. Marcos, if we did get 20, could you absorb 20? Uh, or it's 15 the max? So, um, he looked at a schedule, the teachers, the courses, and he felt comfortable. If we increased that to 20, then, um, you know, he would be comfortable with that.
Here's another way to ask, I think, what you're asking, is are we, are we leaving ourselves a wiggle room? Let's say next year, we have a weird year. Let's say next year, we have a weird year, 10 kids, sixth graders move into the district. And so now they're gonna be in that bigger seventh grade class next year. Is, are we adding teachers at that point? Or I guess I'm asking that overall school choice, like, strategy? Are we leaving us a wiggle room in case we do have kids move into there? Or are we going to the max, which could actually hurt us moving forward if we have to add teachers?
Not for that grade. So that's, that's one of our smaller grades. So when we work with the principals, we kind of like project that. And then you look over the years, how many students have moved in, you know, in the middle school. So, you know, I think for that, for that grade, I mean, to absorb another potentially, so this isn't automatic, they're here, this is the potential families.
And really, we'd be talking about all grades for this, not just that, right? Because just, that one just has 20, ninth grade has 20, but really, I guess I'm just asking if all grades, are we leaving us a little wiggle room or we're not going to the max?
Yes, I think that the big piece, when we go all the way back to our strategic plan, one of the biggest assets for this community and one of the priorities is to make sure we're maintaining a reasonable class size. So you know, we're not gonna, I think, increase our school choice where all of a sudden our class sizes become unmanageable. So we're still falling into that, that manageable, you know, ratio.
And I will just say, just as a kind of a group discussion point, this was something that was brought up at my mayor's meeting last week that I attended. And a lot of districts are thinking at this now, because, I mean, really, really what we're doing is opening up seats to just keep our staffing the way it is, right? If we let kids, if we decide not to do choice, obviously we don't have that revenue stream at school choice funds, which again, we're already in the negative because of that, right? We're only getting 5,000, it costs 17,000 plus to educate a kid and to report. But it's really just keeping our staffing levels at the same rate by adding seats. So I guess it's just a choice that we're gonna have to think about probably down the road if we want to continue down that route. But I know a lot of districts are really thinking of that right now. Now, a lot of those districts aren't in our area either, like they, they're really, they're thinking, oh, cuts already this year, and so we're not, we're not, you know, faced with that yet, but you know, a day could come, so it's just something to think about.
Yeah, and I think, just to play a scenario out, you know, we had a huge influx of students come into our district because of the generosity of our community at one time. So keeping in mind that that is something that could happen in the future or other scenarios like that, I think being careful about, you know, some flexibility, you know, whether it's people moving in individually at a time, or whether it's a huge influx of folks, refugees or newcomers coming all at once. I think the generosity of our district and the ability to absorb that was really beneficial, but that was, you know, just something I think about when we accept more students just through school choice as well.
Sorry, just as a point of clarification, Mayor, so I think the, in terms of the finances, I mean, you know this, but for everyone, it's not a one-to-one, right? We get 5,000 and it costs 17,000, right? If they're filling an empty seat, it's not necessarily that we're losing that amount of money, but what's also interesting in terms of finance, and correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent, but for all of the students that leave Newburyport and go somewhere else, so we're participating in choice, so that means our students can actually choice out, right, and go to somewhere else, those students still are counted on our books for chapter 70 funding, so we're like, by that math, we're actually still in, we're positive for every kid that opts out, right? Because the state gives us, you know, $15,000 for our enrollment numbers, and if that kid opts over to Amesbury, we pay Amesbury 5,000, we're still plus 10 on that kid thing. So just, you know, I know it's not a one-to-one comparison because of the class sizes and such, but even if you did that math, you also want to factor in all the students that leave, we're actually positive on them. So it's just another way to look at it.
And the other piece too, for per pupil expenditure, it's just a simple math that they're taking the overall budget and then dividing it into, so it's not necessarily every student is getting 16, five of services and all of that, it's just the overall budget, and then they take the 2,200 students and put it into, and that's how they're, you know, developing that per pupil expenditure. The other piece too, and we'll talk about on the Hill, we had a great with MAS C, and they were talking about budgets, they were talking about cuts. We were, some of the districts that utilized a lot of the revolving accounts to balance this year's budget. There were many other districts that did the same thing. The, there were some districts that do not have school choice because of the funds that are coming into the districts and they're laying a lot of, you know, they're laying people off. But because I think we've utilized school choice strategically, not, you know, adding to fund our budget, we also have some of those revolving accounts to assist when the financial times, you know, like now, and possibly as we anticipate next year. You know, with the contracts, we're gonna have to be very fiscally, I think, strategic on how we have a balanced budget next year. I mean, we're already, we're already thinking next year's budget, so. But I just think that, you know, for us, our staffing pattern going into next year is already existing, and then these students are just those open seats that we would not, you know, we would have the similar or same staffing pattern anyways, regardless of school choice or no school choice. We're just taking advantage of our, you know, staffing patterns that we have now.
Anyone else?
So would this potentially preclude fewer students coming in at the other big years, big entry points? For instance, ninth grade year seems to be a year in which we absorb a lot of students for a variety of reasons, which we've discussed in the past and we don't need to reiterate, but would that suggest that presumably there would be less spots in that class?
Yeah, it depends on, I mean, that's from eighth grade to ninth grade. Typically, that ninth grade class leaves you open up between like 15 and 20, because there's a lot of decisions that family make going into that, you know, their first year into high school.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, that would be ongoing, so it could only be 10 slots open, it could be 20, depending. And when you look at a high school schedule, because there's four grades, it's not a, it's not like a traditional, like even Mr. Marcos and the elementary schedules, they're very set and scheduled, where high school, you even have a lot more flexibility, because, you know, you have electives, there's more opportunities for students within a high school schedule. So typically, you can absorb, you know, more students at the high school. But for us, as we do all of this and work with our administration and understanding in Newburyport, there's a lot of pride in manageable class sizes, and we're not looking, you know, we're not looking to add 25, 27, 28, 30 kids in a classroom right now, we're in a good spot of, you know, at the elementary between 18 and 22. At the middle school, it's similar. At the high school, for some of our course subjects, it's 24 and lower, so that's, we take pride in that too.
Yes.
In terms of keeping track of new students coming in, like between the end of the school year and the beginning of the fall, I mean, is there any information, like what's happened in the last 10 years?
The students that are moving in during the school year?
Right, yeah.
The transient population?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we track that, it's, I would say it's a lot of students moving in to Newburyport during the school year, but that's data that, you know, that we have, that we consider.
Okay, so like stating from the end of the school year and throughout the next loop, you have that information?
We have that information. How many students have come and how many students have withdrawn?
I mean, can you, I mean, I know, maybe it's off the top of your head, but like, have you seen, you know, a spike at one point and then things dropping off?
I think right now, I think what we, what we've seen is, as Ms. Walker said, the L families. We've seen, I would say that that's been a population that's been moving in during the school year. But then on the, on the other side, they, we also have a population that's moving out of L families too. So it's kind of been back and forth, but I agree with Ms. Walker's, you know, with the way the world is right now and the migrant population that's moving in, we do have to position ourselves to make sure we can, you know, provide, you know, education for those families when they get here. But yeah, that's something, that's a data point that, you know, we could share of, from the start of the school year to the end, how many students have moved in, how many families have moved in, how many families have moved out.
Okay, just, just as a refresher, the, the motion is to add five slots to sixth grade, so we'd go from 15 open slots to 20 for school choice. All in favor?
Can I just make sure we reference the policy in that motion, which is JFBB? Policy JFBB?
Okay, in reference to policy JFBB. Thank you for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? All right, all set, thank you. And then we're going to do another motion, so I move that we add three slots, or a total of three slots, to grade one school choice, also referencing JFBB. Is that correct?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Was this in response to requests for grade one, or what, what was the change?
We've had requests, and especially at kindergarten and first grade, we get requests, and so for those families, we always, you know, let them know we're monitoring the numbers, this and that. So at this point, working with Ms. Sokolowski, you know, she feels very similar to the Mullen, to add three to first grade would not be a big deal, and if they did get a lot, you know, say more students move in, we could accommodate that. And remember, we added, because of that class, we had to add the extra first grade teacher. So we have eight sections of first grade. If we had just the seven sections of the first grade, then the seven sections of that first grade class would, that class, those class sizes would have been really big. So by adding the eighth teacher, it's created an opportunity for some, three slots to be added.
So I guess my only question is, how will this be managed in terms of the advertising and the timing where school choice is officially closed right now?
I think for everything other than grade six, this, I'm hoping this, Michelle and I, this will be the last school choice discussion that we'll have for a while.
Haven't we closed?
Registration for the grades that you had approved, all of those openings, that registration period is closed on the 10th, but when the school committee reopens, more slots for different grade that we treated as a new opening and notified, Dusty, and do another, and to say we will offer three slots in grade one and then have that registration period probably be open for about four weeks.
I see.
Do the same thing, but just for the back grade.
I just, I wouldn't be surprised if we get more than three applicants, so then we just need to be prepared for another round of lottery and just the management pieces of that to be aware of.
I think you might also have to advertise and open that there's an extra five seats in grade six.
I don't think we have to do that because they had the five over.
Correct.
So the superintendent was recommending that you add five more slots to avoid a lottery of the 15, of the 20, to fill the 15 they first approved.
I don't know the rules, but I'm just.
We have done that in the past, that we've just accepted all the students.
So sort of take them off a potential waiting list.
Yeah, right.
Because we did advertise, there were four, there were four newspaper ads that went out for grade six already.
Gotcha. But now you'll do it all over again for the three grade one slots?
For the grade one, three slots.
I see, okay. Any other questions about that?
But essentially, it seems these numbers are being enhanced, they're being raised because there's increased interest?
Yeah, I think the last couple of years, we, we get a lot of interest in Newburyport Public Schools, the last two years specifically.
But the, the sort of target numbers that we've discussed for quite some time were established because that would have been optimal?
It all depends, so when, when you look at the.
Clearly.
Yeah. Each grade is a little bit different, so it's not every grade is gonna get 10 slots or, it all depends on how many students are in that grade, and then how many slots that we can open up. There are some grades that are closed because there's just too many students to maintain a strategic, you know, planning and grade levels and, I mean, class size and stuff like that.
Do you have a sense of how many of the school choice enrollees are families of employees in the district and/or city employees?
I think we have a fair amount of school personnel and also some city personnel, you know. We do. And there are some school personnel that those grades have not opened, but every year they, they always are requiring in this game.
Yep. Are we all set? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So let's see. We're up to subcommittee updates, and Mr. Callahan is not here, so I will do a FinCom update. You missed a packed meeting, Mr. Boger, so.
I heard. I heard a little bit.
So we reviewed the three policies that Ms. Walker had sent that were relevant to finance on crowdfunding, student fundraising and student activity accounts. Mr. Callahan said he would follow up with you. Did he follow up with you?
I'm not gonna report.
You're not gonna say?
Badly about any other individuals not here to report for himself.
All right, all right, well, that was, that was his intention, that's what he said.
So noted.
We, we approved a bunch of minutes, and Mr. Little Hale gave us an update on the bus contract, which is moving, moving forward. We also talked about the FY '25 budget, a little bit of prep for the meeting on June 4th, just so everyone knows, that's the Budget and Finex Public Hearing at City Hall. That'll be 6:00 PM on June 4th, and so just, you know, trying to anticipate any questions or concerns that might come up at that time, so that we're prepared for that. And just so everyone knows, the, the final budget vote is June 25th, 7:00 PM at City Hall. That's for the citywide budget. And the other thing that we discussed, and I'm gonna call Mr. Little Hale up for this, is there's, we need to vote on a new adult meal price for school lunches, which is to reflect some new state law, so if you want to just fill us in on that?
It's not the state law, it's.
Oh, Dusty.
National School Lunch Program regulations.
Thank you.
You might recall, I don't know, it was two years ago, three years ago, we had a vote to raise the student meal prices, and that's a whole different set of regulations to go through. For the adult meal prices, we had a, Dusty came in and did their review of the program, and one of the things they noticed is that we had not raised the adult meal price for several years, and we were no longer in compliance with the regulation. Currently, the adult meal price is 375, and it should be at this point in time, 499. Anticipating that would have to go up again next year if we just vote to go to 499, I made the recommendation that we vote, you folks vote to approve it going to five and a quarter, and that should probably cover us for the next couple of years. So, you know, in the memo that I did including the packet, there was the copying of the regulations from the National School Lunch Program, as well as the rationale for going to 525. And again, this is for the adult meals, not for the students.
Are there any questions?
Do we know how many adults take advantage of?
You know, I do the question.
About 3:50, I'm not gonna wait until tomorrow.
I'm not eating lunch anymore.
Well, you know, given the cost at. Say McDonald's or something, I still think it's a, for five and a quarter, it's still, still a good deal.
Okay, any other questions? So do we have a policy reference for this?
No, this is not a policy reference, this is a.
It's not relevant to that?
No, because we have to do what the regulations say we have to do if we want to continue to be in the program.
And to be in compliance with the food services program. Okay, would anyone like to make that motion then? That's an easy one.
I motioned to raise the adult meal price to 525, starting in the 2000. I motion to raise the adult meal price to $5.25, starting in the 2024, '25 school year.
Second.
I think it's actually effective June 1st, 2024.
Is that, when would this become effective? Just so we're clear for our motion. Yeah, come all the way back up, thank you.
Right, I should have said that while I was up here. My recommendation is it goes into effect as of June 1st, because we're already not in compliance. I mean, this will cover the last two weeks of the school year.
Okay.
And then it will be all set to go for the fall, we won't have to do anything else.
All right.
So I'm going to stay up here until.
Dry your motion.
I will just say, I will just say, could we make sure like a communication goes out to staff?
Yes.
Notifying them ahead of time before they go up and don't have the.
That's why I didn't make the recommendation it goes up tomorrow.
Dollar seventy-five with them to get their full lunch.
Communication, and I'll let Tammy know, who's the manager, will get that communication on.
Okay, well, I move to raise the adult meal price to $5.25, effective June 1st, 2024.
Thank you for clarifying the motion. And we had a second from Mr. Boger. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready for our policy, Ms. Walker?
Okay, I have two policies to bring forward for first reading. First one, funnily enough, is about the meal charge, but it's about meal charge for students. And this was, this was a policy actually that we were already reviewing with the MASC process. We had put it on hold to make sure that it was consistent with our current practices and that we weren't going to, you know, mess anything up by approving it. And what happened, actually, it happened that in the course of the review that Mr. Little Hale just referenced, there was a recommendation to update it to be consistent with the MASC policy. So this proposes to delete the entire existing policy and update it with the policy that's in your packet. So they're both policies, both the existing and proposed policy are in your packet. Any questions on that? No, okay. And then the next one that we voted on, and both of these we reviewed at the policy subcommittee and voted to recommend approval, or, yeah, with the revisions. The next one is naming new facilities. Also, this one is one that we had tabled during our MASC review, in part to get input from the school attorney. That communication I do have, and the superintendent does have, but it is marked on the communication and is not to be shared without prior instruction and guidance. So I can basically say that these, unless we get permission, we can publish it in a school committee kind of correspondence, but that basically these recommendations are consistent with the recommendations that were in that correspondence. And in brief, the specific mention of Newburyport Education Foundation in the policy was not, was recommended to be removed. It doesn't mean that we can't every, you know, we can't still give that power to the Newburyport Education Foundation specifically to, I think Ms. Higgins said it, sort of sell these, market these as fundraising opportunities for naming facilities, but that the ultimate approval of the name itself, it falls on the school district and the school committee specifically. What we are also recommending is that, you know, we communicate and work with the NEF to come up with a procedure. The list should be approved every year, and that policy, this policy indicates that if we are going to designate this ability to sort of sell names, sell naming rights to the NEF, that we should approve that list every year. But it doesn't exclusively, we can name facilities in other circumstances, they don't always have to be for sale, so to speak, so we talked about that a little bit earlier. There will be situations where we might have a request to name a room that doesn't come attached to a gift to the NEF. And those circumstances aren't frequent, but we should have that ability to consider that. So there's not really a lot of change to our policy, other than just clarifying. We also suggested removing some of the language that's more procedural, which is the last two paragraphs. I think we removed everything except for one sentence clarifying that an offer of financial contribution may accompany a naming request, but is not required. So that's, those are the crux of the changes that we recommended. Anything that you guys want to add from the policy folks?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. In terms of when in the year, is that something that you would want to specify in the policy? Or we should probably work with the NEF to figure out what's the best time? Because we were talking about that in preparation for this meeting, if we wanted to approve that list, it seemed to make sense to just kind of finalize the policy first and then figure out, is there a time annually when they're reviewing and refreshing the list? So then we could, we could follow on that. So I guess we'll just see what works best.
Yeah, I don't think, I wouldn't, I think that's more a procedural question. And I think, what we talked about is when we bring this forward at the next meeting, we should probably have sort of an outline of some procedural stuff that would be not in the policy, but would be something that we can, again, communicate with the NEF about, you know, at what time do we want to be during the year, is it appropriate to be approving these lists of names or naming opportunities? And then, you know, I think there were some other, oh, and then I think in that communication also separately, you know, what would we require to be submitted with the list? You know, one request was to have some sort of understanding of what the NEF's process is, when a donation is suggested or when they want to work with a potential donor on naming in exchange for a donation. So I think that would be something that we don't necessarily have to have figured out when we adopt this new policy, but it would be good to start to think about what procedures we want to clarify.
Great, thank you. Anyone? Okay, SISL, Superintendent, do you have an update?
Yeah, we're gonna, I think what we want to do with SISL and my parent council is to have a June meeting, kind of after all of the events that are happening. We're looking at the second week of June. And the whole idea of that will be to, I think, go through the entire year of the work we've done with Portier to graduate, top date, not only my parent advisory council, but also SISL from start to finish, and then work with the group, have it as a working group, and then develop some priorities moving into next year. So I think it's two great groups of committees, so having one meeting instead of having some of the people come out. And especially now we're hitting a lot of events right now in May, the beginning of June, so to try to squeeze a meeting in, we felt that would be better at the.
Okay. When is, when is your normal, regular meeting for the parent advisory?
I think we're looking at, I forget, we usually meet on Tuesdays. Our parent advisory, we had a meeting scheduled for May 28th, but I'm going to move that till, I think the second week of June is when most of the events are, the night events.
Yeah, I think that's TBD, because we had one in June that was the same night as the NEF awards.
So we had to move that.
And you said you're going to move it, so.
So we're looking at that second week of June.
Okay.
But I'm going to reach out to the SISL committee members along with our parent advisory.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Boger, communications, we have a meeting coming up.
Yes, we have not met since, but we do have a meeting this Thursday, the 23rd, at 6:00 PM at the Knox Library. I believe the superintendent's going to be gracing us with his presence. We've also invited Counselor Cameron, who's coming, and he invited Counselor Khan, who I believe you approved.
Yeah, so what he suggested to me when we spoke is to include members of general government, because he reminded me that that's in the consolidation of their subcommittees, education in the schools falls under their charge, under general government. And so he had made the suggestion to kind of open it up. I don't, did he end up doing the double posting thing? I wasn't sure if that would happen or not.
I think he was looking to post it and he went, well, he was curious to know, and I finally posted it with Ms. Gill today. So I think he's intending on that.
So I think the idea was that the three members, which is, so, and Cameron is, he's coincidentally chair of that committee. You know, we invited him as council president, but he's, he's chair of that committee, and then it's also Heath Rannis and Afroz Khan.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention Heath, yeah.
Right, and Ms. Walker and I have served with Afroz Khan on the Joint Education Committee. So that seemed like a nice idea to bring her in, because we're just trying to bring back that momentum, so that we're having regular communications.
Okay, so if that's a meeting, if that turns into a meeting of the city council subcommittee, then it changes the, that changes the meeting dynamic in that I think they record every single subcommittee via Zoom. They offer participation via Zoom.
Well, then we'll need to follow up with him on that.
It's, if it's our committee that they're attending as members of their subcommittee, that's different, but if he's posting it as a city council subcommittee meeting, we may need to confirm with him that we're not, that's not something we do.
Great. Would you mind following up with him on that?
Absolutely, yeah, I'll think about it. Maybe the suggestion is that we invite them.
They invite them to participate.
I encouraged it to be something a little more informal, where we're just kind of brainstorming, you know, improved communications between the two bodies.
And maybe there's a potential for joint meetings down the road, but it should be discussed, yeah.
Yep, thank you, if you don't mind following up on that.
Certainly.
All right, superintendent's report.
All right. So I was just going to report on day of the Hill that I got to attend with Vice Chair Hall. It was actually a great day for the Massachusetts School Committee Association, and then also superintendents that were there. We got a legislative update, we heard from the MASC president, we heard from Commissioner Russell Johnson. And then they kind of prioritize some legislative priorities, especially during the budget times for schools. And we had a great lunch at the great hall in State House, which was nice. But all kidding aside, there's a couple of bills that are out there that the school committees in Massachusetts are really advocating for. The first piece is taking a look at Chapter 70. So Chapter 70 inflation rate is 1.35%. That hasn't changed in years as they calculate Chapter 70, but the actual inflation rate is 4.5%. So just starting off, as they develop that formula, they're already not anticipating the costs of a lot of work. They want to maintain the Chapter 70 minimum rate of $104 per student. If you recall, we got a number of $30 per student, and we go all the way back to our budget updates for everybody. We are calculating in addition $65,000 of an increased Chapter 70 funds, but if it stays at the 104, we would, Newburyport would receive 270, around $270,000 in state aid to the Chapter 70. So they really recommended for the legislators to maintain that. They also talked about fully funding circuit breaker, which is obviously very important at 75%, and then which would include special education transportation as part of that circuit breaker, which would be very helpful, fully funding the SOA, Student Opportunities Act, and then support MSBA increased costs with a lot of the projects that are going around the state. The reimbursement rate is so low from MSBA that it makes it not worth it. We also had a discussion as a follow-up on the North Shore superintendents, which is the 24 districts on the North Shore, so we meet monthly. So as we're looking at calculating and working with our state officials, if you look at for special education, 1972, the Chapter 766 law was passed, it's never been updated, it's never been changed. So the funding sources are going all the way back from 1972. Then you have Proposition 2 and 1/2, which has had the impact on schools. That was created in 1980, and then you had Ed reform of 1993. So some of these legislative passing bills have not been revised or changed, especially the funding formulas with a lot of them. So as superintendents, we're talking about 21st century, we're talking about getting, you know, these students ready for the working force. And then if you look at a child that's going to be born today, you know, we just, you go through that, born in 2024, they enter kindergarten 2029, they graduate high school 2038, they graduate college 2046, and then the workforce 2047, but yet, when we're talking about funding and public education, we're being held to some of these laws that have never even been looked at. And so when you're looking at, 1972 was all about inclusion, everyone is 100% about helping all of our students to the best of our abilities, but the funding formula, nothing has really changed there. So I think on the school side, with superintendents, working with the legislators, these are some of the, we're just asking to have working committees to really take a deep dive and look at some of these laws and how they impact in public education. Because I think, you know, we're basing a lot of our budgeting and priorities off of, you know, 50 years ago when things passed, which is, so as much as we're trying to do, you know, balance our budgets, I think there's got to be a deeper dive into some of these laws that are driving the way we're funding public education. So that was kind of a lot of the positive that came out of it. And then also listening to other districts and other superintendents, as we were saying earlier today, we were talking about school choice, but many districts have utilized their reserve funds to fund this year's, their budgets within their own districts, similar to what we did this year, but as we all know, that's not sustainable. So I think there needs to be a lot of work at the state level to address, you know, these issues, because if not, it's, you know, something's got to give. So those are some of the big impact on some of the bills that was brought up, I'm not sure, kind of rambled there, but, you know.
Yeah, no, that's great. I was really impressed with all of the speakers, particularly the, the two legislators from the House Committee on Education. They seem, they really understand the challenges, particularly the financial challenges that we're dealing with. And one of the big takeaways for me is that the legislators want to hear from us, that they, you know, they, they would love to hear from their constituents more, hear from school committees more about what their concerns are and what they want to advocate for. I also, we also heard from the interim Desi Commissioner, Russell Johnston, also very well spoken, and he, he addressed the issue of teacher shortages, which is increasingly a problem to, there's very few people going into teacher training programs, and they're looking for some creative ways to incentivize and accelerate the process for teacher education. So it was interesting to hear about that and how we could maybe benefit from that. Because I know in the past, we've had those, I don't know if you call it an internship, but, you know, we've had.
Fellowship.
Fellowship, we've had, we've had multiple fellowship students, and that's been, that's been a beneficial program for us, and then kind of, you know, they just ran, ran dry and we haven't been able to access that. So trying to build up some of those programs, again, make it affordable and attractive. I was happy to hear about that.
Yeah, to that point, just in my six years here, coming out of COVID, so when we used to have fellows from Endicar College, Salem State, Mermack, it was almost like a job interview. We would have, we had an English position where we needed a fellow, you'd have six, seven, eight, 10 people being interviewed, and now you can't even, there are no fellows that, in these colleges. So we're hoping, and the state, I think is, one part is to really look at the recruitment of this next generation of teachers, so, so it's good that they are focusing on that.
He seems very aware, so.
Very aware, so. And then I think my last piece is just, I plan on June 3rd to bring in all of our, as part of the whole restructuring for the district, we're hoping to have all of our new people in those positions. I'll introduce them to the school committee. But we've been interviewing, doing a lot of work, Pam Kelly and her, her Department of One has been doing a good job. So we plan on, similar to Mr. McWeeny. So we plan on, similar to Mr. McWeeny announcing him, we plan on the whole restructuring and all of the different people that were in the process of hiring, and then the people that were interested in stepping up. I am pleased to say we have a lot of internal candidates, a lot of teachers that have shown interest and have interviewed for some of those positions, so. June 3 will give the, hopefully the final update of all of our hiring in all of those positions.
Just a quick question, the assistant superintendent position?
Yep.
Will be.
That will be on June 3.
Okay, we have to actually vote on that one?
Correct, we'll separate that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll bring that recommendation June 3.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I just wanted to mention, you had put some, a bunch of MS, MASC material in the packet.
Mm-hmm.
So just for people to, if you want to scroll through this, there's a bunch of forms where you can nominate people for various honors and things. A lot of them say June 1 deadline, I think there might be a couple July 1. Just if there's anything that's of interest to you.
Vice Chair Hall, I actually, that was, I asked that that be put in the packet.
Obviously.
So I don't, I don't know that everybody gets the MASC comp, I don't, I think I'm the only person who gets the comp, this packet, so I gave it to Ms. Yell to include in the packet. It is a number of nominations for different MASC statewide kind of representations and awards and things like that, but one of the critical things in there is that we buy, we have to nominate delegates for the conference, which happens in November, and it seems like every year we've forgotten to do that, so just a heads up that we should decide who our delegate is going to be for the delegate assembly in November. I think we have until October to officially make that determination.
I saw, yeah, it was an October date.
Yeah.
So we'll try to.
But there are other things in here, like nominations for, that I think are later in the summer, but nominations for officers for, to serve on the MASC board, which also would get voted on at the delegate assembly, and then a few different awards and things, as Ms. Hall said.
Well, thank you, thank you for including that, Ms. Walker. Do we have any new business?
Well, it's not new business, it was presented as new business several months ago, so it's just recurring back, so new old business. But in, in reference to the new hires, we had discussed at one point, maybe having the opportunity for Ms. Keely, the superintendent, to talk about hiring policies, particularly those that are directly related to positions that the school committee, you know, ultimately approves. That was a discussion that came in the wake of the hiring of the, of the Director of People's Services, and now with the super, assistant superintendent position becoming so relevant, I just thought it would be a good time to reiterate that, that at some point that would be good to have a discussion about, maybe a presentation where we could see how those may or may not be being codified as going forward.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion.
I'm wondering if that would be a good one for the summer retreat, potentially.
Third of the last meeting, but I know Ms. Kaylee has done a lot of work on hiring process throughout the district, so everyone's on the same page, and she spent a lot of time, you know, working on the procedures and working with our, our attorneys also, to make sure our procedures are in compliance with all hiring, so I'm sure we could definitely put together a presentation to give the overview of what, where the district was and kind of where we're at right now.
That's great to hear, thank you, yeah.
You mentioned the retreat, has that been, that date been settled on? I, I.
Yes, so we voted on our meeting's calendar, I want to say it was at the last meeting, so.
And it was on that calendar?
So, yes, so it's the, it's the night of the, whatever that first Monday is in August, from 4 to 8 PM. We did that last summer, and it seemed to work well for everyone to just do it on our meeting night, but start earlier. I don't have that date in my head, are you looking at it for it, Ms. Yell?
No. It's okay, I didn't realize, I missed that it was on our last.
It could be the 4th.
Did you bring that calendar?
It's the first Monday in August, if you look at a calendar.
It's the 5th.
5th, August 5th.
I may not be able to attend.
Oh, okay.
I probably won't be able to either.
Guess it's not the 5th.
All right, well, I mean, we can, we can talk about potentially moving it. At the time, it seemed like that was okay with everyone when we voted, but that, there's time, there's time to shift it and communicate about that.
We start later, so we start in half the Labor Day, so although you have scheduled school committee meetings, you could even move that. Like you, you may not need to have that on the 5th, you could even do a retreat the following week, because we won't have much to report as we're preparing for the.
Right, and then our first meeting in September is actually before school opens.
Correct.
So, yeah, so we have some flexibility in there if we want to shift things, so I can, I can, does anyone else have a concern with that date, August 5?
Not yet.
Yeah, right. That's fine, that's fine. But I mean, if we have two members who can't make it, then maybe we look at potentially moving to another date, so thanks for the heads up on that. Anything else for new business? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.[1341.23]